Are we all set?
We're waiting on air. There we go. This is a special common council meeting held Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. The time is now 6:03. Would you please call the roll?
Elder Person Juswicki.
Present.
Elder Person Bailey.
Present.
Elder Person Kastner.
Present.
Elder Person Akers.
Present.
Elder Person Sarian is excused.
Okay, thank you. Item B, new business discussion decision to approve memorandum of understanding between the City of Greenfield and the Village of Bayside to establish an emergency management 911 dispatch services backup center.
I'll just let you guys know what that's about. It is a agreement between Bayside and us to provide redundancy or for disaster recovery in a situation where our buildings become unavailable for the purposes of dispatching, we would be able to stand up emergency services and dispatching at a location in Bayside. By doing this, we're making the first steps to work together with the surrounding agencies in an attempt to reduce costs, have less overlap, and it also makes us available for some of the grants from the state.
I would strongly support adoption.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Kastner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Bailey.
Just one quick question. Why Bayside?
We picked Bayside because they were designated the primary PSAT by the State of Wisconsin for our area, for the county of Milwaukee.
Okay.
By the ICC for the county.
We have similar systems operating wise?
Almost identical.
Well, that even, even better.
So Bayside does the dispatching for the seven North Shore communities, so there's actually seven communities that are associated with Bayside. And Bayside is the lead agency to provide dispatching services to the seven North Shore communities. Okay.
I think we have a motion.
Motion in a second. Could you call?
Elder Person Juswicki.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Kastner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Ask if you can leave a copy to sign, then we, because I think they need it, right?
Yeah, I'll get one for you right away.
Right, thank you. Item number two is common council going to close session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat Section 1985, parent one, parent C, E, and F, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or personal evaluation data of any public employer over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session, and considering financial, medical, social, personal histories or interdisciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in any such problems or investigations. This is to discuss current vacancies in the Greenfield Health Department and possible intermunicipal agreement as to same.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey.
Second.
And by Elder Person Druswicki. Would you call?
Elder Person Juswicki.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Kastner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in closed session. We have Julie Foley here, HR person.
Now you can do it.
I move and we end closed session and reconvene into open session.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey is her second.
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drews Wiki, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are out of closed session at 7:32. With regard to three, it's to proceed.
Truly, thank you.
Izzy, I'm sorry.
It's be, it's the procedure directed? I think that's all it is, right? So, no formal action is required. Going to item four is discussion, possible action regarding process and current status of the two thousand twenty-three full property tax assessment revaluation. We have our assessor here, Mr. Les Arons.
He's not our assessor, is he?
He's our, he's officially our assessor, our official, our assessor of record.
Talking about, okay, Tim, I'm like, Tim's not our assessor. Come on, you're gonna use that hat, too.
So while that's happening and he's going to give the presentation, I have to go sign some couple things in the, is that okay? So.
No, it's not okay.
So how does it? Should we take a short break for a potty break?
Sure.
All right, so I, a recess at seven thirty-three and we'll be back in just a couple minutes, okay?
This one was well viewed.
Yeah. On YouTube.
Was it?
YouTube, yeah.
Was it?
Yeah, they were tagged.
Twenty-two dollar thing was seen.
Oh, I pointed people at it. People, people saw that video.
I think, well, that, it is what it is, right? I mean, just so you know.
You didn't know that, no.
And you guys can go watch it and increase our ad revenue from YouTube. But, um, in essence, people are wondering, what does the residential assessment mean? And hopefully tonight, you guys can explain, you know, the categories, you know? How's, you know, the levy doesn't change, it's like if your house goes up in value and we collect more taxes from you, that doesn't mean that the city now has a bonus of more money to spend, it just means that it's, it's sort of shifted around. In essence, at the last meeting, and this is all, and we have someone from the finance department, Tim here tonight, who's a Greenfield resident, whose house went up in, in pretty, pretty good as well.
Everyone's did.
Right, everyone's did, right? But, um, the idea is, how do I know what my taxes are gonna be, right? So, last year, the tax rate at the assessed, the old assessed valuation was about twenty-seven dollars for the city, the school district, Milwaukee County, MMSD, and M A T C, which is vocational school on the tax bill. Now, the legislation may have changed that, so the vocational, we don't know what the implementation of that is yet, and we're still trying to figure out what the legislation actually was through all the people that keep an eye on that stuff for us. But generally speaking, your tax rate was twenty-seven dollars across all those taxing jurisdictions for the previously assessed value, which was a lower value. Now that there's been a, um, a reevaluation that you guys have had open book on and they're going to open, or open book, and then you go to the border review. It's, it's anticipated, and we have two major school districts, and they have different budgets, and they have different shared revenue or state aids, and they have different this, and they have different that, and one of them had a referendum. And they have different fiscal years, they go from July first to June thirtieth, as opposed to calendar years like us, right? So there's a, but generally speaking, under your new assessed rate or value, it's about twenty-two dollars per thousand. So the rate went down, but your assessment went up, and that ultimately means that you're probably paying more in taxes. And there's been, I would say, some pretty strong political, and we don't know if it's twenty-two, it could be twenty-one, it could be twenty-three, because we don't control the other taxing jurisdictions or referendums or any of those things. But generally speaking, that's a good kind of number to get a spitball of what it is, right? So, of, I thank every council member that's sitting up here, all of which would live in Greenfield, and all of which have had their houses reassessed at a higher value. They alone, I think, were a little shocked by the sticker damage, you know? And I think each one of them has had discussions at the end of their driveway or in the sidewalk, or in the grocery store about, well, what does this mean, and, and all of that kind of stuff. There was a flurry of calls and attention paid to this, as there usually is, right? So we're asking you to come in and try to explain what it is, and then when you're done, I'm gonna try to explain, because a couple elder persons have asked, well, what's the impact? And what can we do to minimize this from an expenditure side in the city taxes, right? We're about a third of the tax bill, thirty-five, forty percent, depends on what the ultimate levies are, right, and who is included. So, you got somebody that wants to talk? Les, do you wanna talk?
Absolutely.
You're clearly the most eloquent of the group. So if you could come up and, and if there's anything to, any handouts, that would be helpful. And then we'll just leave it to you for a while. I'm sure people will have questions, right? Just remember, too, that when it comes to evaluations and everything. The, there's still the border view that's coming, and I'm guessing a number of people have signed up for that?
Two to, to date.
How much?
Two.
Two people?
Mm-hmm.
So how many people have actually approached you and questioned what it all?
I'd say currently, we're about seven percent.
Seven percent of the people?
Mm-hmm.
Property owners contacted you?
Yes, yep, seven percent we've had contact with either at open book physically or by email or by phone.
So what is seven percent? How many, what, how many taxpayers are there?
There's eleven thousand parcels.
So seven percent of eleven thousand?
Yeah, a little over seven hundred.
So about, seven hundred people have contacted them out of the eleven thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, and two of them are, and two of them have.
Two of them so far to date have filed objection forms and that we received from, from Jennifer, so.
Can you go through before you start?
Yeah.
Just for the practical side? So, I'm, I'm Mister homeowner, and I'm really pissed off, because my tax, you know, my house used to be worth two hundred thousand dollars, and now it's worth three hundred thousand dollars, just kind of fifty, about fifty percent, right? Yeah, I'm not good with that. It's gone up fifty percent, or it's gone up sixty percent, and I'm really pissed, and how could you do this? And I'm calling you.
Yep.
And, and, damn it, why did you do this to me? I'm gonna, what do you say?
Well, basically, we just first explain the process, you know, that we haven't done, haven't performed a revaluation in fourteen years. And that two hundred thousand dollars was established back during the last revaluation year. So, you know, on paper, it might look like a one-year increase on your assessment notice, but in reality, it's over a, you know, fourteen-year period. So then we'd kind of walk them through the, some, you know, sample of sales comparisons that we used. You know, here are six, eight, five, whatever, the, um, you know, how many ever good comps that we can find in that neighborhood or neighborhood group that are similar to that person's property? And then we run through those and say, well, you know, these homes are similar, of similar age, style, condition, size, location, and then we run them through what they've currently sold.
But I don't have a finished base, and my neighbor's got a finished basement.
Yep, yeah, so that's another thing that we do, is we run through their individual property record to make sure that we have the correct records on file for their property as well. So, and then from there, um, you know, sometimes they'll have some additional information for us to consider, you know, recent appraisals, realtors' opinions. Hey, I have all these pictures of my condition of my home, you know, my bathroom hasn't been remodeled since nineteen fifty, uh, you know, kitchen doesn't have any cabinets, whatever the case is. And if that's not matching the data that we have in their individual record cards, that's something that we certainly, certainly, you know, take under consideration. And then get back to them about saying, oh, hey, we've reviewed this, and we've made an adjustment to the assessment. That's kind of what we're going through right now, since we've gone through that physical open book, and now we're getting back to the people that, I guess, were, for lack of a better term, were, you know, agreeing to disagree. But there's some further information that they've provided us to consider. And those note, those letters are gonna go out Friday?
I guess seven.
Hey, Monday. Monday. So, uh, will be, should be done Friday, those letters are gonna go out on Monday, and then typically, we get a little bit of a response from those letters as well. So, from there, there might be a little further review. Generally, at that point, we're pretty firm on our numbers until then, you know, we come to the border review, and then it's really out of our hands.
So what are you gonna do with my taxes? My taxes gonna go up?
Yeah, so what I would look at for taxes is I would look at what your increase was compared to the average increase. And that would be a good test or determination as if your individual taxes or how your individual taxes are gonna be affected. So if the average increase was forty-five percent, and your individual property assessment went up sixty percent, you know, I'm, you know, not gonna, not gonna, not tell you that your taxes are going up, because on paper, it looks like your portion is gonna increase by about fifteen percent. And then either plus or minus, however, the budgets kind of shake out. You know, are the budgets going up for the year? Are they going down for the year? That part, we don't know. So, and on the other end, there's gonna be some properties out there that may have only gone up fifteen or twenty percent. Their portion of the taxes is actually gonna come down from what they were previously paying.
So when my neighbor at the end of the driveway asked me, well, my taxes are gonna go up two thousand dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
Which is probably in the right frame. And he says, well, where's that money going to? Because he realizes we're not spending any more money, because we can't, because of levy limits and everything else. And then my answer to him is gonna have to be, well, McDonald's is gonna be paying two thousand or probably four thousand dollars less, because McDonald's went up eighteen percent as opposed to Mister homeowner. And then I have to tell him, well, may, I don't have the answer to why McDonald's only went up eighteen percent. And then it begs the question of, why were they potentially being assessed or taxed more over the past year? I'd be mad if I was McDonald's, we may end up being sued for that.
Yeah, the, so what we've found in this revaluation, and, um, you know, looking at what properties are sold for, so we looked at the last two years. We looked at residential, we looked at commercial, and what we found is that the assessments compared to the sales of residential properties were very, very low. So, you know, if we wouldn't have performed a revaluation this year, we estimate that the average assessment would be just north of fifty-nine percent of the actual sale price for residential property. Where on commercial property, the average assessed value is about eighty-five percent of the sale price on average. So.
So what does that mean?
So what that means is that.
If you're looking at each of the different groups, like multifamily, commercial, office.
Yep.
Medical office, single family, condominium, I mean, do you have some idea of what?
Yeah.
The increases, do you have those?
Yep, definitely, so, um, and maybe what I could do, too, is just kind of run, run you guys through.
That would be great.
Yeah, let me run you guys through this, uh, this document I put together, and that may answer, you know, answer some of these questions, so. You know, just to start, I guess, a history of the city of Greenfield, so, you know, of course, for two thousand twenty-three, this is a revaluation year. The last full revaluation, when values were set, was back in two thousand and nine. So we have a, we have a fourteen-year timeframe there of the market changing that we, we need to capture in this year for January one of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, if you move down to the next bullet point, this is our ten-year history of, I should say, overall level of assessments for the city, excuse me. So, in two thousand thirteen, we were at, you know, real close to a hundred percent. And through the kind of recession years, you can see that that level of assessment stayed pretty close to a hundred percent. And then all of a sudden, when the market got better, we dropped to ninety-five, to eighty-eight, to eighty-one. And now we're saying for two thousand twenty-three, without performing a revale, we would have been at sixty-nine percent, meaning that the average property, doesn't matter the class. The average property in the city of Greenfield would have had, would have assessed value about thirty percent lower than what it's selling for. So, uh, there's a number of years that the city can go for without having to do a revaluation statutorily. Uh, so two thousand twenty-two, we were in our first notice of non-compliance. Uh, so the state pretty much kind of put us on notice saying, hey, uh, you guys are out of compliance, you have to stay within ten percent of, a hundred percent of market value. And for two thousand twenty-three, would have been our second notice. And if it wasn't pulled in line with, in two thousand twenty-four, the state would mandate a reassessment in twenty-five.
And can I just say a couple things?
Sure.
So, the first, second, and third, or the second and third year that we're out of compliance was during COVID, right?
Yep.
So when we saw these numbers, and everybody's staying at home, and everybody's buying houses, because they need to be, you know, because they can't go outside, and they're investing, right, and interest rates are low. The city, that would be sort of me and the P, and, and our finance department, we thought there was sort of a bubble being created by COVID.
Sure.
Right? I mean, it was like, we're out of whack, because people are buying houses and there's low interest rates, because they can't go outside.
Yep.
And play, right?
Yeah.
The other thing that I kind of wanted to point out is that going into this year, right, when interest rates are starting to go up, what we're sort of expecting is that people aren't gonna be continuing to jack up the prices of homes.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Interest, uh, the interest rates have gone up five hundred basis points.
Yep.
You know, they've gone from three percent to seven or eight percent. So you kind of expect that the value, historically, there's an inversion, right? If interest rates are high, values go low. If interest rates are low, values go high, because people can borrow more money to pay for it. That hasn't happened the way it normally happens. The other thing I want to point out about these last couple of years here is, I still think we're sort of in a bubble, and I don't understand it, because it's not, it's not happening like it normally happens. But the second thing is that we didn't have to do this until next year, and I misspoke at the last meeting. And the reason that we wanted to get it done this year, and we pushed you so aggressively, even though we didn't want to, sort of, because we thought there was a bubble, right?
Correct.
Is because we have a presidential election next year, and the person that does all the stuff, the seven percent people and all that, is through the clerk's office. And if you look at the list of how many dollars you spend on the clerk's office, um, to go through a full evaluation, reevaluation of the city, and to do a major presidential election, where we're getting, um, open records requests almost daily. And we're responsible for new rules that get created overnight, and all those other things, that we wanted it this year.
Did we wait too long to reassess as a city?
No.
Did we reassess, uh, coming up to the, not, you know, if you would have did it in twenty eighteen, uh, coming up to that ten-year?
There was no reason to do it in twenty eighteen, because we were at ninety-five percent of value.
I don't understand that. Would have been as bad, uh, would we be in, in the pickle wearing now, if we would have did it, you know, every five years, or every, a little more sooner than since two thousand nine?
Ultimately, the, the shift of tax burden would still happen, and ultimately, the, the values that we, um, that we reported would have been the same. What you likely would have saw would have been, um, two, you know, potentially smaller increases or smaller shifts of tax burden.
So if part of the, say we did it in two thousand seventeen, people would have been sort of upset.
So.
We did it again, it would have went up again, and now we're getting hit with a big.
But I want, Bruce, if you look at the sheet, in two thousand seventeen, we were at ninety-eight point three eight percent, right? That means that your two hundred thousand dollar house, if that's what it is, we were assessing it within two percent of that.
Correct.
Right? So we weren't out, we wouldn't do a reassessment if the valuation is close to a hundred percent, there'd be no reason to do it. The following year was, two thousand eighteen was ninety-five percent, so we were plus or minus five percent. That's not a reason to do a reassessment. What happened in two thousand nineteen, when it went to eighty-eight, two thousand twenty, when it went to eighty-three, two thousand twenty-one, when it went to eighty-one, twenty twenty-two, when it went to seventy-four, and twenty twenty-three, when it went to sixty-nine, is between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-three, real estate prices exploded for resident, single-family residential homes. The problem in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, when it's at eighty-eight percent and eighty-three percent, is that's COVID. Twenty-one, it was COVID, too, when it went to eighty-one percent. So when you have open books and nobody can show up, because you can't go outside, generally speaking, that's not probably the time to do a reevaluation. And this looks like it's a blip caused by COVID, because people are staying home.
Does the state require us every ten years to reassess?
No.
No.
No, so what the requirement is, is once a municipality drops below ninety percent or above a hundred and ten percent, meaning that once the average home is selling for less or more than ten percent away from its sale price, they have, uh, six years before a revaluation is then mandatory.
Do most cities wait as long as we did?
A lot, a lot of them do wait, um, just due to budgetary constraints.
I, I don't think the problem is the value of the homes. The problem is the value of the homes compared to the value of commercial. So the homeowner is now paying a lion's share of the tax burden on the city and the commercial properties are paying less, a lot less.
Can I ask, are multifamilies considered commercial?
Multifamily, considered multifamily.
Four, four, four units and above are considered commercial. Anything below four units, duplexes would be considered residential.
Did, did the multifamilies then, what was their jump? Because, I mean, rent prices are.
Very high.
Insane.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the.
Actually, if we love, it's on the next page.
Yep.
I'm sorry for interrupting you.
That's okay, that's okay. So I guess one of the things I wanted to point out on the first page is you can see all those percentage values that I have listed. The next two bullet points are kind of interesting. So you have the two thousand thirteen residential, and I just picked that number because it was ten years ago. You have the two thousand thirteen residential versus commercial level of assessment comparison. So in thirteen, our level of assessment for residential was a hundred and, call it a hundred and two percent. Commercial was ninety-seven percent. So fairly close, fairly uniform, fairly equitable between those classes of prob, those classes or categories of properties. In two thousand twenty-three, you can see that we are predicting that residential would have been fifty-nine point six eight without us performing a revaluation, while commercial is still holding about eighty-five percent. And that is due to the sales that have occurred on an annual basis. Basically, what this is saying is that the residential housing market has exploded in the past ten years, while the commercial market has lagged behind.
Actually, what this is sort of saying is the residential has exploded since COVID.
Yes, and commercial is depressed because of COVID.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you look, just look at.
If you look at the last few years, right, I mean, it really started to heat up and change, two thousand eighteen coming into two thousand nineteen. And then it was only pushed by COVID. And then we thought, coming out of COVID, that that would slow things down and it didn't. And then we thought rising interest rates would slow things down and it hasn't, at least for the residential class. And the commercial class is a little bit trickier because there are different segments. If you turn to the next page, kind of on the bottom, actually, right on the bottom, I've got some statistics listed. So, you know, the commercial market, like I said, has different segments. So, you know, the average assessment increase citywide was forty-five percent. The residential class has been a leading, leading the charge, has been very strong for a number of years. That is at sixty-one percent. Commercial class is only at twenty percent. So that, there is your, your example of shift of burden. Now, within the residential class, the increases are kind of homogeneous. Single family, sixty-two, condos, sixty-one, duplexes, fifty-five. But you get into the commercial class and you start seeing, if you go to the next page, the, the last page, you see some different market segments where apartments certainly are one of the strongest segments. Thirty-five percent increase on average. Where on the other end of the spectrum, you go to office, well, really office. Medical office is only at a little above two, general office at seven and a half. And retail is not that, hasn't been that much better. And again, these are just reflections of what property is bought and sold for on the open market, typical arms-length transaction.
So these are reflective of the change of the value in fourteen years?
Correct, since two thousand nine.
Years, offices really increased to half a percent a year.
Correct. Yeah, what we've seen is office was, you know, likely increasing, but the last, you know, and I'll refer to, you know, Dwight here, the last, what, probably at least three years? Would that be fair, fair to say? The last three years, we've seen office values actually probably decline.
So is it fair, is it fair to say that before COVID, office was good?
I wouldn't say good, but better than it is now.
I have a question with apartments. We've had a lot of new builds with, with apartments. So I, I can't see a lot of them selling. And how is that incorporated in here? Because I think, you know, Eighty-four South and some of our other biggies, I, I, thirty-five just doesn't, looking at everything else in the housing market, I can't see why everything else is like fifty to sixty percent when this is only thirty-five. And, I mean, that, it's exploding and people, I mean, we're approached all the time, people wanting to build more apartments, so.
Yeah, the, the, the new builds get added as a net new construction. So if you had anything new for two thousand twenty-three, that gets added to the roll, but it doesn't really get revalued because it didn't have any value the prior year. So that doesn't aid, I guess that doesn't add to that thirty-five percent. But also, one of the reasons you probably haven't seen apartments go up as much as like single-family residential could also be cost as well. Cost of materials for reserves for replacements, cost for management fees to run those apartments. That all has certainly gone up in the past decade as well. So the value of commer, of commercial apartment buildings really is dictated on income, income and expenses. You know, what can I, what can I make and how much does it cost me to make that? And, you know, certainly, we've seen apartments go up and income go up, but we've also see, seen expenses to run those and to hold those apartments go up as well.
It's tough because single families cost money too.
Yeah, right.
Same argument too.
Yeah. It's like, why is that not counted?
And we had, and we had plenty.
Furnace, rough, you know.
We had plenty of examples of apartments that have sold within the past two years in the city. So it, it gave us a very good idea of, you know, what those apartments.
Were those new ones, old ones?
Do sell for. Most of them that I saw, at least, were older apartments. Dwight, can you expand on kind of the age of, you want to come up and expand on the ages of the different apartment sales?
So most of them have been older sales. There was one sale. It was of a, I don't remember how many units up, maybe a, I'm not sure of the number of units. Quite large. It sold for forty million dollars. And that came to two hundred and twenty thousand per unit. So that's a pretty good indicator. Even though it was a condo, it was all rented out as a single owner.
To island.
Island.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and that was a, and there was multiple smaller thirty to seventy-unit apartments that we're selling that have sold, that we could put a price per square foot or a price per unit or.
So what happens, what, what happens when a thirty-year-old apartment building that's reached probably the end of its depreciation schedule under the previous owner and now somebody turns around and sells it for, say, thirty million, right? And then they put new siding, they get new management, they put new parking lots in, they put new, they do all of that stuff. There's a lot of, there's a few of those in the community, right? How does that get valued?
Hopefully, they would have taken out a building permit.
Or is it based on the?
Yeah, so two, two different, two different ways. One would be, you know, we'd be hopeful that we would receive a, a building permit, of course, for those, you know, capital improvements. And annually, we go out and inspect those to see what kind of changes, what kind of updates they've made. And then secondly is, Mike Smagelski's been very diligent with inspecting, I should say inspecting, reviewing the MLS listings, sale listings that have come, come along for differences in the property record. So there, there are many, many, many examples on the property assessment roll of properties that we had, I guess, the, the physical characteristics of the properties now are not represented or weren't represented on our old record card. They needed to be updated and value needed to be either added or subtracted, typically added from different remodeling and updates that were done.
Can I ask a question? Now, those remodels, is that considering increasing the value of the property or increasing the cost of the building?
Well, that would, that would increase the assessed value of the property. But I would think if done before sale, that could certainly increase the, you know, the sale price as well.
Do you think taking a pause for a year or two would even out the differentiation between the two different, five different market classes or whatever it is, residential, office?
I, I don't actually. I think we'd get further away and we have a further disparity if we did wait. So what we're currently seeing, so all this data was based as of January one, two thousand twenty-three. So it was sales from twenty-two, sales from twenty-one. What we're seeing currently for sales and general trends for twenty-three is we're still seeing residential, single-family and condos appreciating and commercial is pretty flat.
So, does that mean potentially if we waited a year, that there would even be a bigger shift between residential properties and the other properties?
That's what I heard too. I don't agree, but that's what I heard.
I'm just.
Yeah. I, I haven't seen the office market in Greenfield as strong as it is now than it ever has been, which seems odd. I can understand the values that are selling could not be strong, but the rents they're getting and the, the fill rate they're getting is pretty high. And the shift to move towards Milwaukee on those office and work and commercial seems really strong as well. Because I'm, I was, I was floored by that differentiation. I did not see that coming. I figured everything would go up sixty percent. I didn't see the, you know, downtown off, downtown, downtown isn't even empty for crying out loud. And that's, that's going to be hard for me to tell people that they're paying more and everyone else is paying less and primarily out of state people.
What is our vacancy rate in commercial? Do we know? Have any idea?
It's been, I will say that before COVID, there wasn't a commercial vacancy that I'm aware of on Seventy-sixth Street on Lake, or Highway one hundred. I was aware of none, honestly. Everything.
Well, one of them, we know. We own it now.
Which one?
We own it now.
Well, other, I mean, Spring Mall's been vacant for twenty, well, fifteen years or something. But when it comes to all of the other, like when you look next to Cops or you look across the street where FedEx used to be, or you look at any of the strip malls, there was somebody in everything. Now, sometimes there were vape shops and sometimes there were other things that people may not like, but there were leases everywhere.
Well, and looking at.
Same thing on twenty.
Went out and now we're getting the credit union and.
Same thing, well, that was from, so everything legs, right, two or three years?
I know, but I'm saying.
So when that, that leg, right, two or three years ago, everything was pretty much full, even on Twenty-seventh Street. On Forest Home, there were a couple vacancies, but not, they were full of something.
TGIFs are not TGIF, yeah, TGIFs is vacant.
So right now, if you look at the strip malls, the only things that you see going in are vape shops and, right, I mean, that's what you see. I mean, and nail places and those are, those are.
Dollar Generals.
Are what?
Dollar Generals and stuff like that.
That kind of, yeah, I mean, they, they typically don't pay high rent, right? They're the four or five or six dollars a foot people. The places that pay like twenty, thirty, forty dollars a foot, they're nice restaurants and all that other stuff. There's, I think that there's vacancy more now than there was. If you go down to Seventy-sixth Street and you just look for lease signs, you'll see some. And before, you didn't see any, unless it was somebody just bought it or somebody just rehabbed the building. That's all anecdotal. I don't know what the vacancy is because we don't keep track of that.
When I look at surrounding, our surrounding communities, I always try to take a look at that when we're deciding, whatever, you know, how many policemen are hired and what Franklin and Oak Creek and New Berlin, I mean, are they facing this kind of crisis?
As far as crisis.
As far as this hike and, and there are taxes that are going to go up as much as us?
It's a shift.
The shift.
Shift.
Yeah, there's, right, I mean, really, it's, I guess, it's, it's not unique just to Greenfield. This thought that, or this, I shouldn't say thought, this, you know, the residential class of property appreciating faster than the commercial class of property. We're seeing that, you know, really everywhere in southeast Wisconsin. And we're seeing some very, very large increases. If, if you look just below those increases we were talking about, I have five other communities that we performed a revalue, revaluation for, for two thousand twenty-three. For instance, the town of Cedarburg, they hadn't done a revaluation since two thousand ten. They experienced an average increase of fifty-two percent.
And is that for residential or is that for all over?
That was overall.
Yeah, ours is forty-five overall, so most of it.
Elkart Lake was two thousand eight, forty-three percent. Kiwaskam, fifty-two percent, last revale, two thousand ten. Sockville, forty-nine percent, last revale, two thousand twelve. And Thiensville, forty-eight percent, last revale, two thousand fifteen. And I would be, you know, comfortable saying that the residential percent increase has well outweighed the commercial in, in all of these on average.
Would have been my guess.
And from a macro perspective, that's going to continue as a result of.
I think housing market.
Unless there's some kind of change.
Something that forces residential property to.
Correct.
Fall, which is.
To correct itself, if, if that's on the horizon or not.
I think the problem is shifting away from single-family builds too. So not having an increase in the market. I mean, most developers are going for the apartments. They're not going for single-family houses because they can make more money putting an apartment in than they could.
So this is, this is the other problem to that. So, you know, I know some of this a little bit. So like in Franklin, an apartment building was just sold, right? One of, it like a forte kind of building, right? And I don't remember what the, the sale price was, I think it was forty-something million dollars. And the price per unit in the apartment building was two hundred and forty thousand dollars per unit. That's what it ended up as, right? The cost of building new apartments, just in a kind of, you know, is between two hundred and eighty to three hundred and fifty thousand per unit to build an apartment. When Eighty-four South went in way back when, right, it was about a hundred and fifty thousand per, and I don't remember what it was. It was something like that, a hundred and fifty-six, seven thousand per unit to build it. So that's another consideration. So if houses aren't being built because they're too expensive, they're literally six hundred, you're spending six or seven hundred thousand to build a house that's probably worth four fifty or five, right?
Yep.
And apartments, you know, people can't move into houses, so they're moving into apartments. And apartments are expensive and the rents are expensive and evaluations are based on rents and construction costs and all that other stuff. There's a whole nother dynamic, there's a whole nother dynamic going on here that I think you're trying to capture, but it's kind of new, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
How does this affect the other taxing districts, you know, the, the school, our two school districts? How does that, how does the assessment affect them?
It doesn't.
Doesn't at all.
No effect at all?
Doesn't have any impact on the city.
Except for the referendum.
We still collect the same, this is the thing I think people struggle with. We still collect the same amount of taxes. The best example, and I've been trying to go through this with people, Greendale, you ask how adjacent communities are doing, right? There was a time that Southridge was the largest tax-paying entity in Greendale. It was, I think, close to a third of their property taxes or more, I don't remember. So in Greendale, you had Southridge, which was commercial, and then the rest you had is basically single-family, right? I know there's apartments and stuff, but basically, single-family. So two-thirds of the, of the, say, ten million dollar budget in Greendale was paid for by residents and one-third was paid for by Southridge. It was the same amount of money.
In the village.
Yeah.
The village, right? Now, Southridge isn't worth anything, kind of, right? And I was told at one point it was down to fourteen, seventeen percent of the value. There's, there are ten million dollar budgets. There's, their ten million dollar budgets exactly the same, whatever their budget is, right? But instead of paying two-thirds of the budget, they're paying eighty-five percent of the budget. The levy that the village collects. When you ask about the school district, it's the exact same thing. It's the exact same thing.
Except for the levy.
In the old days, Southridge was paying, and I'm, one-third of the taxes for the school district and the residences were paying two-thirds. Now, Southridge or the commercials paying fifteen percent of the schools and the residences are paying eighty-five percent. And I'm being really loose with these numbers. I don't know exactly what it is, right? That's the best example. And that's exactly, we don't just have one Southridge. We have a lot more multifamily and we have a lot more commercial space and we have a lot more of this and we have a lot more of that because we're bigger, right? But what's happening is that shift is just, it's happening.
Well, we have to say too, Bruce, that Greenfield School District is getting an increase because of the referendum. So that's going up.
So, so this is the other part of this. So if you're in the Greenfield School District, it's my understanding that they had a referendum last year and they asked, it was a spending referendum. They wanted to spend more this year because in a year or two, the debt service that they had for the high schools coming off and then ultimately they can lower it again. But they had a bump here, right? This is trying to make everything balance while you're trying to run something, right? So when you say, well, what's gonna happen in Greenfield? What's gonna happen in Greenfield schools and all that? What's gonna happen in Greenfield schools? Because there's a referendum, their total levy is higher. So if nothing had changed, you would have paid more, at least for a year or two, and I don't know what the specifics are with regard to the referendum. But in a couple of years, it's gonna drop off. But now that this happened, you're gonna have not only the shift in taxes going to residences from commercial, kind of like the Southridge thing, right? The total value that's going to the school district is gonna increase for a year or two. And I don't know what the specifics are of the referendum. And then the next question is, well, why?
The taxpayer said it. The voter said.
That's why.
Oh, the referendum question, yeah. I, the way I look at it is with this change and you paying two thousand dollars a year more in taxes because of the burden shift, you essentially lost twenty thousand in viability or saleability, affordability on your home. So in other words, your home value took, I mean, compared to last year to next year, when you do the bank crunching, you lost twenty thousand of viability. So in other words, your house is gonna sell next year twenty thousand, potentially less, if nothing else changes.
So this is the thing?
Shaking his head, so that must be, close to being right.
So this is the thing. If housing prices drop by twenty percent next year, which they crash, and then you kind of go to the first page here?
Yeah.
Then, right?
Then we have to reevaluate again.
Then we would probably have to do another revale because things are out of ten percent whack and we shouldn't wait.
And we've done that before.
And if taxes, and if real, if residential properties continue to go up in value and commercial and offices lag, you could argue that doing a reevaluation isn't in the best interest of a single-family residential person because they're gonna have to pay more taxes because they're making up for the declines elsewhere.
And also, I mean, just global picture, looking at a big, I mean, this is also gonna affect businesses because there's gonna be less disposable income out there for the homeowners because they're paying more.
There's all sorts of macroeconomic things that we can talk about with this. I mean, the reality is that if everything is by Amazon and there isn't the need for a Walmart or a Meyer or any of the, because those things are worth, those two things are worth, I think, forty million dollars. If there's no need for them and you can just get it in your mailbox and Meyer and Walmart go dark store and we start talking about all that stuff, that forty million dollars of value is also gonna shift to residences. And if people don't go to McDonald's or, we don't have a Chick-fil-A, wish we did, but I go to the one in Greendale. But if we don't have McDonald's and Burger Kings and, and Red Robin's and all of these other restaurants and people just eat at home because they can't afford to, then that means that everything that we used to do there and the taxes that were generated there because they sold things there get shifted to the residences. And if people don't go to the medical office buildings anymore because there's virtual meetings, right? Your healthcare provider says, we don't need an office, we'll just hook you up, we'll send you, it's cheaper for us to send you a camera, right, on your computer or iPhone and nobody goes to the office anymore, then those things decline in value and the shift gets shifted to the residences. And the question is, well, why, how is that fair? Why, why aren't they paying something? Well, because they're not worth anything anymore and people still need to live in houses and apartments.
I could make the argument that the, my, my crystal ball, and I'll probably say this on air and it'll be on tape, I think the commercial office will catch up in the near future, especially in a closely rimmed community as Greenfield is. I think you'll see that more of those offices will be filled. Those offices are still more expensive, just like the houses to build than they are to, to buy separate, you know, by existing. So I think our values on that will shift the other way. But I cannot make that crystal.
I don't know when.
If we get to that point, then there can be a reevaluation done at that point.
So there's all these microeconomic things that I think are happening. So the city of Milwaukee has higher sales tax now and the city of Milwaukee has this and the city of Milwaukee charges for light.
And the county has.
No, well, whatever it is, right? And so if you're making a decision, somebody told me that all these cars, right, all the people that work in the big buildings downtown, their cars are all registered Milwaukee at their office, right? And now they won't be, right? And now, because it's like, I'll just register it at my house. It was easier to get the bill at my office and to deduct it at my office, right? I mean, all these little things that are happening, ultimately, I think people leave the city even more so because it's more expensive to be there. And I think it, maybe it's less safe there. I don't, I'm not trying to create some kind of controversy over what's safe and what's not safe.
We're gonna fix our problem with the Milwaukee tax, right?
But there's, well, well, yeah, I don't know what to do about that. And I've notified all sorts of people that can, as soon as that's, side note, as soon as the one taxpayer pays in Greenfield, the city of Milwaukee sales tax, I think we will be prepared to sue and seek an injunction. We, once we have that. Because there's no way to differentiate for most national retailers that were not in Milwaukee. And as soon as.
Milwaukee or the retailers?
Huh?
What do we sue? The retailers?
No, we, we sued to make sure that the law is properly filed because it's not, one of my residents or one of my whoever is paying a tax that they're not entitled to collect. That's another story.
I've been paying attention to it and it's the same side note. Sometimes they ask you if you're Milwaukee, city of Milwaukee or city of Greenfield, but if you just buzz past that, which you could do, you could easily be paying them off.
Switch it.
Couple of years ago, I, I went to the state website, the Concealed Carry state website and there's the, there's little things that you have to check and they're different kind of modules, right, that you had to fill out. And one of them didn't have a place for Greenfield. It defaulted me to Milwaukee.
My work, UWM defaults me to Milwaukee. I keep telling it, I don't live in Milwaukee, I live in Greenfield and they keep saying no.
So I have spent nineteen years trying to get that changed and it takes, it'll take a congressional act nationwide to make sure that the proper municipality that the census, the census folks have is used to identify properties as opposed to the post office, the proper municipality.
So Les, do you have any problem if this gets posted on the website of the city for people to access your?
That was my exact question.
Yeah, not at all.
Do you have anything better than that there to explain it to the people that the burden shift are easier?
The YouTube link for this?
We can't put it up. I mean, I, I think, I'm, I know there's a couple of you are very excited about, you know, well, what impact is this gonna be, you know? We're all gonna get fired because our taxes went up. And that may be true. That may be true. But the reality is this shift is happening everywhere. Single-family residential property taxpayers are paying more of the burden. The burden isn't increasing. We're not getting a windfall of money. But that's what's happening. And it doesn't matter who's sitting up here. This is what's going to happen. And there's this idea that, well, if we'd done it ten years, well, we didn't have to do it ten years ago. We had a major, this is my big fear and I've told all of you this. In two thousand seven, condos in Greenfield were four, going for four hundred thousand dollars, five hundred, they're, they were building them everywhere. They were spending crazy money to build these things, right? And we reassessed in two thousand, right? And then after that, right, we started the reevaluation and then two thousand eight happened and nine happened, right? And condos were worth a third of what they had been, right? What I was trying to do throughout all this process after COVID, right, was like, I don't want to live through that again. There was a bump and you can see the bump where it went from basically being stable at ninety-eight percent down to eighty-eight in two thousand nineteen and eighty-three in two thousand twenty and eighty-one percent in two thousand twenty-one. I didn't want to spend, because it costs a quarter of a million dollars to do this. All this stuff that's happening is a quarter of a million dollars to do a reevaluation citywide. Well, why are we panic, you know, next year we'll do it again. It's like, it took us time to save up money that we put aside to do this and I didn't want to waste it. Now, next year, if there is truly a two thousand eight or two thousand nine correction, then I think we should invest in a revaluation to make sure, and the numbers bear out that it's something completely out of whack. Then I think we should invest a quarter of a million dollars to do it again to make sure the burdens is, is spread evenly to the, the best extent that it can be.
Would we be out of line to put a pause on applying this revaluation this year for at least one good reason? That would allow the homeowner and the taxpayers to anticipate the new shift in taxes? Because as it stands, obviously we've got two percent or whatever it is that came in that don't realize the impact that.
Not two percent, two people, right? Was it two percent or two people?
We've had two people apply for border review appeals. About seven and a half percent of the total residents we saw or heard from that open book.
So the, the small percent, my point being is that people don't realize the impact that this is gonna have on the homeowner. So they're gonna be hit with a bill in December, due in January, and I ain't got the whole year, but most people are the mindset, I gotta pay this bill all this year. So they're gonna be hit with a two thousand dollar, a thousand dollar between there someplace and they're not gonna have the money available. So is it out of line to put a pause on two thousand twenty-three and apply this in two thousand twenty-four?
Since we would still be within the, what, the seven years or six years with the state?
We'd still pay you guys and we'd just apply it a year later.
So whenever we, and I think whenever we send it out next year, let's pretend we did that. We said, man, this is just crazy. We think there's a bubble. We've reevaluated every property in the city and we kind of know where we're at, right? But you're worried about the property tax impact this year because it's approaching with four months, five, six months before you have to pay it, right? And who's gonna, how can you save up two grand, right? So can we come back in two thousand twenty?
Four.
Four, when we were supposed to do it and, and kind of reevaluate everything again? Because some of it's algorithms, right, when, when you get to single families and stuff potentially, right? Can we do it then and can we redo a revale like next year?
I mean, that, that's a possibility. I'm not sure, you know, if it's in the best interest or not.
So why is it a good thing and why is it a bad thing?
Well, I guess it may be a good thing because like Mr. Kastner, you know, stated, the residential property owner may be able to say, well, it gives me a little time to save up for something that's coming. It may be a bad idea because the commercial property owner might say, well, geez, I was planning on, or I know that there's a reduction coming now that I'm not gonna experience for this year. The other thing too is, you know, at this point, it's gonna be pretty tough for my, me and my team to undo all the revaluation work that we've done. Because essentially what we'd have to do is we would have to start from a two thousand twenty-two database that gets rolled over to two thousand twenty-three empty and re-input, revalue all of the new construction, all of the demolitions, all of the annexations and detachments. So any work that we need to do or that we've already done, we have to redo there. And then, you know, so that would certainly, I guess.
If we.
I think it would be fair to, you know, for us to be asking for some kind of an addendum to the contract because we certainly, it would require some, you know, pretty significant funds, additional funds to redo that.
So if we just, if we actually changed it in two thousand twenty-four, if we applied it in two thousand twenty-four, there should, you could just keep all the data the same. So we could take a sample points throughout the city and that'd be couple, it would be as significant of a burden as you talk about and then make a decision on whether we should redo that? I'm, I'm thinking just put a pause it to give people time to save money.
Can you freeze everything that you've done and not put it in effect until two thousand twenty-four? I think is the question.
Not, not that I'm aware of. We would still have to report our new construction, demolition, annexations, all of our annual assessment work that we perform on an annual basis. We would still have to perform. The problem is, is that we don't have a, you know, and I hate to sound like this, I don't have an easy button just to take away those revaluation figures that we've applied to every, every home. We would have to roll over, start from scratch and then add in all of our annual assessment work that we normally do. And then on top of that is, we've already done our initial reporting to the state of Wisconsin as far as net new construction and TID districts. We've done that reporting at a hundred, at a hundred percent of market value. So now if we revert back to last year's or a maintenance year, not a revaluation year, now all of a sudden, all that new construction has to be valued at only sixty percent of market value, citywide, around sixty percent, citywide and in TID districts. Meaning that if we experienced, and I'm just using an easy number, if we experienced thirty million in net new construction, you know, we would have to report that at eighteen million, meaning that there would be a twelve million dollar adjustment in next year's net new construction.
The pain associated with that would be horrific.
Yeah.
More or less.
That would be tough for planning and budgeting. And then I'm a, a little bit concerned about the possible PR challenges that that may have as well. Because everybody's got their notice, everybody is, people with concerns have come forward. You know, now if we're going to go back to a maintenance year, we have to resend notices, you know, probably with some kind of explanation as to why. And then there's gonna be likely a, a lot of questions involved with that process as well. And we still have to then hold our open book and board review anyway.
And next year, you would have to have the real val, if you did it over?
Well, right, next year's, we'd have to include the.
Residences.
Two thousand twenty-three sales.
Could actually be worth more.
Right, the resident, what we're seeing right now is residential properties would actually be worth more with commercial properties lagging behind. It would create a further disproportionate level of assessment between those two classes. And then I guess lastly is, you know, we would still have to charge for an additional revaluation next year. We would have to redo and include all the sales from two thousand twenty-three in our analysis.
On the one hand, they might be able to save more money, knowing that it's coming, but they'll have to save even more money because it's probably gonna be higher, potentially.
Correct. Yep.
I had to ask.
No, but I'm just saying, that's the.
Inherently, we'd also be putting the city at risk if we had commercial properties that were expecting that discount, which we talked about.
Bring more light to the point that.
If they started showing up at board review, and I remember what that felt like, being chair of that board before sitting here.
And we thank you for that because it's the most horrible board to sit on.
I don't think it's that bad.
Thank you for.
We do not want to be in a position where we have more than, let's say, three business owners that own major properties in the city. And I don't want to get too specific. that own major properties in the city, and I don't want to get too specific or get in trouble here, that do not want to pay or they think they don't need to pay and in some cases withhold pay.
Well, arguably, they could use the reevaluation as evidence.
To go back years.
Right?
Yeah. And if we get in that position and we have the five generous people now, like four, four or five people on the board now that donate their generosity of their time, having to deal with more than three businesses, let's say twenty, thirty, forty, they will be in, they will be doing this for the rest of the year.
Well, I mean, we just need, we need to do what's in the best interest of the city and reduce the liability and the exposure for things.
Yep, yep.
Right?
Correct.
You're a board of review now of the process that's going to be coming up, correct?
Yes.
When will that happen, timeframe?
Early September. Yep, early September. So basically what we're going to do now is we're going to send determination notices to the owners that have approached us at open book. And really what's going to happen there is they're either going to be reasonably pleased with that response or for lack of a better term, if we're still agreeing to disagree at that point, then they have the opportunity to appeal, make a formal appeal at the local border review. And I know we have a believe a day blocked off right now. I'm not sure if we'll need any more time or not. That kind of depends on how many appeals that we do see. But, you know, certainly we'll be here for the duration, no matter if it takes two hours or twenty days.
Do you expect more people to be at the border review other than the two, once you send the letters out?
Yep.
How many people do you, there's got to be like, like ten percent of the people that have.
Typically, typically we see about ten percent of the people at open book. And typically about ten percent of those, five, actually probably around five percent of those, we'll see at border review. So, you know, the one, the busiest border review that I've had this year personally was in the town of Cedarburg. It's about four thousand improved properties, so is, you know, about two and a half times smaller than Greenfield. I had five border review cases. So.
Any other questions? Someone always said the truth sets you free. The truth is that everyone's houses are going to make in value and everything else is going down in value or staying, or not growing as much, and therefore you're paying more taxes.
And it's not just us.
Huh?
It's not just us.
Just Greenfield.
It's, it's, it's.
It's southeast Wisconsin.
It's the entire state, it's the entire country.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
We have so much money that has been printed in the United States that it eventually shows up somewhere. And unfortunately now, or fortunately for some folks, it's showing up in their residential home value. And it's primarily because of spending during COVID at a very high macro level.
There's a lot of people that don't want to rent and will pay anything to own.
There are some people that think making a seven thousand dollar a month mortgage payment is normal now. Normal.
Mm-hmm.
What is?
Coming up with seven grand for a mortgage payment is normal.
Payment a month is normal in some, in some states in the country now.
Paying two grand for an apartment is normal too.
I don't know how they do that because I don't even.
Exactly.
My first house was seventy-nine thousand dollars and I was like, oh my God, right?
I think we've all had those moments, like, how are we going to make it?
I walked both ways home uphill.
I hear you.
I can't afford to sell my house.
I did actually walk both ways backwards.
Yeah.
With the wind, developed really strong calf muscles. So don't mess with my calves, all right?
So it says, possible action. What I'd like to see is that this city sent out a letter to all residences within the next couple of weeks explaining, you know, the reevaluation process and to tell them to expect, you know, or, you know, that a bigger raise in their taxes so they have a little bit more time, I believe for four months, to come up with the extra a thousand to two thousand dollars. We can explain a little bit in that letter, dear taxpayer, because of this, you know, blah, 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 it happened, blah, blah, blah. We worded correctly, we give them some information and we say, be prepared, be prepared to, if we use this figure of twenty-two percent, you can figure it out yourself.
So there's a danger, there's a danger to this too, right? So what about the person that's only gone up fifteen percent?
Because they committed reassess.
And I don't know what twenty, I don't even know what the tax rates are yet. I guessing twenty-two dollars because that's kind of what it would have been last year. But I have no idea.
Have no idea, no.
This is, this is a.
I have an idea now though.
No, we haven't, so, but I.
I have an idea, I'm just saying, I wouldn't like to see a letter put out saying that this, generally speaking, this is what, and give an example, your house was worth two hundred thousand dollars.
But I can't.
You're paying X amount.
It's not fact.
We're anticipating your tax bill, because now you're assessed at three thousand, we are anticipating in a rough neighborhood, your tax bill is not going to be three thousand dollars.
I don't think we can do that, but we can maybe say it more general and say that there's been concern that we're seeing, because of property values or single families going up, that homeowners may be getting a shift of the burden, but not say what the burden for them would be because we don't exactly know, but maybe just imply that there is going to be a shift.
Have an idea.
But we don't, but we don't want to put something out there and then they're saying, but you told me mine would be.
No, generally speaking though, we can't just say, expect your taxes to go up because what I'm trying to prevent is sticker shock. People get those bills in December, they're going to come down here with pitchforks and, it's like the Frankenstein.
We're going to have to put bars on the finance office.
It's going to be, you know, the torches and the pitchforks. If, a surprise, it's, we don't, you know, the sticker shock, I'm trying to prevent that.
I understand that, but I just think, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Bruce, but I just don't think we can.
What you're asking me to do is to give them sticker shock now.
Exactly. So they have one month to prepare and come up with an extra.
No, you're asking, you're at.
Twelve, fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars. Mine's going to go up two grand.
With the data we're assuming.
With the data, and I would like to put in there an example. They could use my house example, just, you know, they don't let, put my address down, but fine, put my.
I'll put your address down.
Put all the addresses down, I don't care. Addresses and, you know, say that this is an example and this is what we're predicting. Pretty much that number is, unless you guys are.
I don't know what the number, Bruce, I'm just, I'm, I am completely guessing.
Why are we even having this meeting if we don't know, we have an idea, right? We have an idea what it's going to be.
You asked, you asked me what the.
It's going to, my taxes are probably going to go up from fifty to hundred, we're using a twenty-two percent, the seventy-one hundred dollars.
Twenty-two dollars.
Right?
But I don't know.
We don't know the exact number, but if, even if it's sixty-nine hundred or seventy-one hundred, we're, we're at least in the ballpark of what, you know, to say, oh, just put down, it just might go up, well, people are going to.
No, it will go up, we just, we have demonstrated that it will go up. I could send a letter saying.
That's not enough to say.
All of your taxes are going to go up. All of, everyone who is a single family home, for the most part, your taxes are going up substantially because there's a shift of burden.
Well, first we've got to decide if this body wants to send out a letter. That's my motion. I will make a motion that we send out a letter in the next two weeks explaining the process and telling people in a specific manner, a specific example that this is a likely scenario, that a property assessed at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year, now that it's assessed at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is going to be worth this projected. And that's what my motion would be.
Do we have a list, could we, can we create a mailing list that only includes residential properties?
Single family, you mean?
Well, single family duplexes, condos, they all want to. And what do I do, so this is another issue, right? A lot of the single family homes in Greenfield are rented. A lot of the single family homes in Greenfield are owned by trusts, family trusts. A lot of the duplexes and stuff are owned by out of state firms, right? I understand the neighbor, the guy that's, you've lived next door to, for thirty years and that you want him to know. But a lot of the residential property, and I don't know the number specifically, but, so about two-thirds of our city is residential, right, by value, was, now it's maybe more than that. Forty, forty-two or something percent of that is multifamily, and I think that includes condos, but I'm not sure. But sixty percent of the two-thirds is like single family homes and duplexes. So do I direct the letters to single family homes and duplexes? Or do I send it to each and every resident in the city? And how do I be, if you're renting, how do I be sure that? I don't know, how do I do that?
I have to go back to the city attorney's comment. I would say post it on.
Send out letters all the time, the citywide.
We send out bills all the time.
Right.
And we can, and we can send out, we can send six, three hundred feet around a property boundary because we can identify the parcels and we can send it to whoever owns it. And I can send a letter to every business, every address in the city saying, I could basically say this. Right? And that.
Can be done, I mean, I.
I don't know how to, I don't know what to say though. Do I say, do I send all of this? Do I send all of this?
Well, that's, we'll, we'll have to discuss, you know, the, what's in the letter. But my motion would be to do that.
To discuss what's, and I'm not trying to be confrontational here and I'm not trying to, as Pam would say, you know, direct things here because I'm the one that kind of has to do it. We can make a motion to send a letter, but it's kind of important what's in the letter that we're sending. So before we make the motion, maybe it should be, we're going to send a letter that says this.
We're, we're going to send a letter to inform our residents of our city that to expect a major increase in their property tax limit because of the assessments. And then we explain what the gentleman here explained to us. Because the whole pie, how we want to do it, you're good at explaining, you're a lawyer, you can explain it.
No, I'm not, good.
I'll, I'll gladly send a letter, I'll gladly write the letter. It's, it's not going to be extensive, it's not going to be a three pager. It's going to be a two, two paragraph saying, we've been reassessed, we haven't reassessed since two thousand nine. We're, you know, and, and this is what you can expect.
Because I want to do this right, okay? And I respect what you're trying to do. The people that will find out that their taxes have gone up will find out in the middle of November, early, early December, which is August, September, October, November, that's.
Four months.
Four and a half months is when the bills go, because they usually go around December sixteenth, fifteenth, tenth.
December, right?
December fifteenth, sixteen, something like that, right? That's what. So can I just make this suggestion that we come up with, before we start voting on sending letters, that we think about it, we have another common council meeting, and I'm not trying to blow you off, but I don't want to just say.
In two weeks, actually.
We have a, we have another council meeting.
In the meantime, can we make some of the list?
On the fifteenth, right? On August fifteenth, on August fifteenth, that we come up with an idea of what the letter is, or we, we have a finance committee meeting next week on the ninth. Next Wednesday, we have a finance meeting. And then we can discuss what a letter should, we can come up, everybody can come up, and I would encourage, it could be a committee of the whole if you want it to be, I don't care.
When is it Wednesday, what?
The ninth, today's the first. That at the ninth, we have a, a committee meeting, we discuss what the form of the letter should look like. And then we can go, come back on the fifteenth at a common council meeting, okay, which is, it's two weeks from now. Two weeks from now, it's still plenty of time, right? On the fifteenth, we can, we can, as, we can agenda an item, discussion, decision to approve communication to Greenfield taxpayers. Or something.
Can I ask?
Can we do it that way instead? Because I.
I like that way too.
But I'm not trying to say, Bruce, I don't want to write a letter, I don't think you guys should write a letter, it'll be too much of a pain in the butt. What I want to do is I want to think about what we're going to write and I don't want to come up.
It's on the agenda that we discuss.
Right, and I'm.
Possible action, I made a motion, if it fails for a second, then.
So if the goal is, and I'm not suggesting.
That it fail, you should ask for a second on my motion. If there is no second, then it, the motion fails. I want that in the record, so please ask for a second.
So if we're doing it for, if we're doing it for political jockeying, that's fine.
I'm just asking.
Is there a second?
Motion fails for a second.
Can I make a motion that we carefully look at wording for a letter?
And direct it to the finance?
Yeah, and direct it to finance.
And put it on the next common council agenda on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Bailey. The motion is, do you have a motion? Do you understand what the motion was? The motion is that.
Finance committee.
Alder Person, the motion is that the, that an item will be placed on the next finance committee.
For the committee of the.
Meeting, which is the ninth.
For the whole committee.
To discuss a communication with city taxpayers with regard to the implications of the reassess, reevaluation with the idea that that citywide communication should, could or should be placed on the August fifteenth common council.
But make sure that it's a committee of the whole for the finance, please.
What?
A committee of the whole for the finance.
Yeah, and that all, and as part of the discussion and part of the motion, that all Alder Person, that Alder Person, saying the chair of the finance committee meeting isn't here tonight, but it's the recommendation within this motion that the finance committee meeting be a committee of the whole where all Alder Persons are present. Does that make sense? Thank God you do shorthand, so, she's really amazing at shorthand, I just see all this script.
It's on the, I don't.
It's on there too, so she can just listen to it, but it's still pretty impressive that you can do that. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Does, does that sound right?
Yes.
I'm not trying to make it, I'm trying to make it, ultimately, I'm trying to make it easier than more difficult.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded.
Can I ask a question to these four gentlemen? Has anything like this ever been done?
Can you expand?
By any of your, have your, any of your other communities after a reevaluation, have they ever created a letter that they sent to all the taxpayers saying this is what's going to happen? Or this is what you can expect?
Has anyone ever been that thorough?
Not in my, not in my experience. I've been in this industry since two thousand.
And how many municipalities and reevaluations do you think you've done since two thousand?
I've, I've performed personally over a hundred.
Okay. Okay.
And your opinion of doing this?
Um.
Not that I'll listen, but. I want your opinion anyhow.
I couldn't care less, but, you know, just another point. I'm not a Greenfield resident.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that it.
For a resident to understand or not.
Yeah, please, yeah.
I'm a Greenfield resident, I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine.
Can I just introduce him? This is Mike, we went to first grade together at Elmdale.
Yes.
We were both held after, after, held after class by Ms. Ray because our penmanship was so bad. Do you remember that?
I do, I do.
It was traumatic.
Some, yeah, very traumatic with Ms. Ray, definitely.
Had really black hair then and.
Yep, real dark, yes.
Yeah, you didn't wear glasses.
Yeah, and very dominating, yes.
You were pretty, is your penmanship any better though, is what I want to know.
Well, if you see my signature, you know, you'll, that'll tell a lot.
It hasn't improved?
So anyway, if I could make a comment about the letter, I think it may add fuel to the fire. We would have, where would the phone calls come from, I mean, go to as a result of the mailing? Are they gonna, is the letter going to direct it to Tim over in finance? Or is it going to come back to us again? And we're going to have to be available for those calls. You know, I think that would, to me, it seems like it would be throwing gasoline on the fire. And I do think, you know, the feedback that we're getting from the people from open book, a lot of them are becoming educated. They're, they feel like, okay, you know, it makes sense what is happening. We're telling them the burden is shifting from commercial to residential. And I, you know, one example, if I could, do we have a minute I could give an example? Twenty-eighth and Layton, there was a bi-level office building owned by the doctors. It was Urgi Med, if you can picture it, right around twenty-eighth and Layton. It was on the market for about a million and a half in the late teens. And we would get calls from buyers saying, well, we feel it's worth under a million, but we're going to be on the, on the rope for a tax burden of forty-five thousand dollars. So they had a. So they had a long, difficult time on the market. The doctors were calling, saying they were retired. They just wanted to get rid of the building. But again, the tax burden was affecting the potential buyers. So eventually it ended up selling. I could be wrong, but it was in the neighborhood of around eight-hundred thousand. So we had to relook at that sale. I believe we lowered the assessment based on condition and functionality issues down to about a million, but we finally got a buyer for that property at about eight-hundred thousand. And what is happening, the doctors, you know, just like we talked about COVID, they had their offices in this bi-level building. And they all retired. The building really became obsolete. So you had, you know, a, a lot of office space. I could name another one. Hundred-and-fifth and Layton Avenue, the paint, first Weber Building, that ended up selling recently within the year, too. And the owner called, the new buyer called and said, you know, the building is pretty much vacant. And so I tend to differ about the commercial occupancy. I mean, there has been a trend going away from office space significantly. And finally, there is another example at forty-eight-ten South Seventy-Sixth. There's a family that owns that building. I don't know if you could picture it. It's a long building. You come in from the north, and it's a pretty modern facility, and I talked with the owner, and he was saying that the family owns it. They're gonna divvy it up to the three family members, so each of them would have the possibility of renting out part of that building. So, you know, we've been telling people at Open Book that the burden is shifting from commercial to residential. And, you know, it, it's pretty significant, you know, I have to, you know, you know, object to your feeling that commercial may turn around. We're not seeing that. Retail is being, you know, reconsidered, you know, the Sport Mart Strip Mall out on Seventy-Fourth and Edgerton. You know, a lot of those bill, occupants went to eighty-four South. I think there's just gonna be a continuous circle of trying to find the next best strip center out there. You know, Kohl's went out of South Ridge, now they're at eighty-four South. Now Kohl's is talking about, you know, downsizing all their stores because they're gonna be trying to accommodate, you know, online shopping. So I think Greenfield experienced a pretty significant shift, and I think, you know, Oak Creek, they're doing, I believe they're doing annual or every other year revaluations because, you know, the shift in commercial to residential is, is real.
So do you, I just wanna ask, do you think it's better to reevaluate it every year, or does it depend? If residential properties continue to go up in value and commercial properties continue to go down, it's probably not good to reevaluate every year for the residential homeowner because they're gonna be paying more.
No, and I do think that'll level out, you know. We talked about the new apartments going up. I mean, there are quite a few large apartments, old apartments in the city of Greenfield. Those are not gonna appreciate in value as a new Loomis Crossing apartment building. You know, there's so much more appeal in a modern apartment building than there is. They're gonna try to draw people from Piccadilly or some of the older buildings, and I think that's where the value is gonna be added going forward. But, you know, I think, you know, as we showed on, on the handout here, the apartments, you know, did appreciate quite a bit. Not as much as average, you know, it was still in the thirty-five percent range, but, you know, I think there's still room for the alternative to the old apartments, to the new apartments, where there's gonna be a lot more appeal and the ability to get a lot more rent, higher rent.
I, I still stand on my side of the Piccadilly apartments gonna increase in value because their rents have been stagnant prior to now for the last ten years. They're, they're pretty stable. They have jumped up hundreds of dollars a month.
The people that bought that place put a lot of money into it. I mean, Piccadilly, I mean, a lot of these.
No, they're, they're getting better rents than they ever had.
Schedules. Can I just ask one question of this letter? Who would they call?
That's something we need to decide.
The Alder Person?
I don't know.
We'll decide.
Huh?
First, we gotta decide if we're gonna do a letter.
No, well, I think.
And then we're in the content.
Well, okay, but I just wanna know, I mean, because it would, I would encourage that the questions go to the Alder Person to explain it.
Sure.
Is that cool?
I'm gonna get a lot of calls, too.
No, I'm just saying. I'm not trying to be funny about that. It's like, it gives you an opportunity to explain what's happening, right?
Yes.
And there's a script.
And we get paid a lot of money to do that.
Does the motion for the letter to go to committee?
Right.
Would there still be an opportunity to decide if to not send out the letter at all?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes. We're not saying there has to be, but, yeah.
I figured out my answer.
Okay.
When they call me.
Call them here.
Yeah.
Thank you. That'd be great. I'm never here, right, Pam? I'm never here.
Call, call.
You have a cell phone, that's.
Yeah, I do.
Call the assessor.
Call the assessor, that's it.
That's my answer.
New city attorney. Well, call Tim. Call the city attorney to explain.
He's a little expensive. We won't have him calling them.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded for next Wednesday, right? And then potentially putting on the council on the fifteenth? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anything else you wanna? I think Mike should answer the calls. He did such a wonderful job. I can't believe your penmanship hasn't improved. Mine was.
Is yours?
Mine's impeccable. I have perfect cursive and perfect block lettering when I need to do it. Seriously, I'm not joking.
That's a text, Mike. You can't count that.
No, I mean, here, you want me to, here, I can show you my curse. My cursive is amazing.
Let's move along. I can't call Andy anymore. It's too late, guys.
Thank you for coming. A motion to adjourn.
Motion, do, do you wanna go through budgets or anything? Did you wanna go through?
Is it on the agenda?
Well, it was part of it, because it kinda follows through with that. It mean, so what I, just so we're clear, there's a couple of things I wanna say before.
More for an air conditioner?
Before we adjourn, there's a couple of things I do wanna talk about. We did get our preliminary net new construction numbers for two thousand twenty-three. The city of Greenfield had four million, right? No, wait, that's equalized. Nineteen million, three-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, seven-hundred dollars of net new construction. It was point four-eight percent growth. Now, we don't know with specificity what that means as far as raising the levy overall, but I'm guessing it's about between a hundred and a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars that we can raise the levy next year. I would point out what I pointed out early on. What we've noticed over the last few years is it costs about seven-hundred thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more per year, every year, just because of health insurance and two percent raises. So, starting the budget, which we were start, we had, I had my first meeting with the court yesterday in City Hall. In two weeks, I'll have all the department meetings with regard to their budgets. I am requesting flat budgets again, like I have for the last forever. I'm anticipating a two percent increase for, for wages, and I'm incre, and I have put in ten percent for health insurance. So, starting this budget, six-hundred thousand in the hole. Just so everyone knows. There was also some discussion, and I gave this to all you tonight, the two thousand twenty-three general ledger, general fund budget by department. This isn't all-inclusive, and Tim is all panicky that, well, this doesn't include this and it doesn't include that. This is how much levy is directed to every department in the city. It also shows what revenues those departments create, which is the total budget expenditure for the department. Okay? Right? Fair? I encourage you to look at that. Someone once said, well, what if we just got rid of the library? We get, we put about one-point-three million dollars towards the library from taxes. The library comes up with another hundred-and-thirty-six thousand of its own revenue. And it costs about one-point-five million to operate a library. So if we got rid of a library, I mean, people say this, like, what impact would that have? That would be about forty-nine cents of every thousand dollars. Right? So it's forty-nine cents per thousand. So if you had a hundred-thousand-dollar home, that would be forty-nine dollars. If you had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, that would be about a hundred dollars, right? At a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it's about a hundred-and-fifty dollars of your tax bill goes towards the library. If you looked at the police department, its total budget is ten million dollars. Our total budget is about, how much is our total budget? How much?
Twenty-eight million.
Twenty-eight million? So of the twenty-eight million-dollar budget generally that we have overall, about eleven million dollars of it goes to the police department, roughly a third. That's about three dollars and fourteen cents per thousand, but I want you to know that it's not really apples to apples. So the police department levy is about eight-point-six million dollars, the levy. But it also generates revenues of about two million, so its total budget is about eleven million. If you were to eliminate the police department, you could probably save quite a bit of money. You could cut the seven dollars plus or minus that taxpayers pay. You could cut that by a third.
You can't even say that out loud.
I'm not. I'm just saying that when people look at this, you need to understand that police, fire, and DPW are the vast majority of our budget.
DPW is coming out zero.
So. This is the danger of being doing something like this. So, what the, what I was directed to do is just best estimate, figure out what revenues, other than the levy, get related to each department. So a major portion, we get.
Where'd you get revenue from? So here's the thing, here, just, because I wanna go, too. So like, our, our, if we had an environmental health person, right, and they got, and they cost us eighty grand to pay for an environmental, or a hundred grand, right? But they get a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in revenue by going out there. They actually create revenue that can be used by others. Right? Building inspections, right? We have inspectors. They cost money. We have somebody that supervises them, right? They make hundreds of thousands of dollars in permit revenue, over and above what they make. So you can say that, well, the levy pays for our inspectors. Well, our levy goes somewhere, and the inspectors pay for themselves, and the inspectors pay for something else as well. So it's hard to do that because you can't just say, I'm gonna get rid of them, because if you get rid of them, you're not necessarily reducing your taxes. You may be reducing an income stream that's attributed to them. So some people are revenue streams and some people aren't revenue streams. The clerk's office, I don't know. You got that in here?
We cover about one person.
So, in terms of DPW.
They have people there, but her revenue from licenses and permits and stuff pays for one of the people. So you can say, okay, we're gonna get rid of a person. Well, not a good thing.
So where, where some of this gets.
You adversely impact your.
Where some of this gets skewed is that we have shared revenue that is not dedicated to a specific department. We're not talking about the new stuff with, that we know has to be used for public safety.
So he's an accountant, and he's gonna get into, he's gonna get his.
No, I'm keeping this really simple. So DPW, what I put there as other revenue is transportation aid. We get one-point-eight million or whatever transportation aid. What's the department that would make the most sense with that? So again, not to say DPW doesn't get any of the levy, but in this example of what we were asked to do, that's how we divide it up, so.
Silly, silly exercise.
It's not a silly exercise. It's, well, so there are people that will ask, well, cut stuff.
Right.
Doug on it, cut stuff. Why do we have a library, or why do we have a health department, or why do we have to have so many police, or why? What do we do with those fifty people that are in DPW, and why do we have fifty people? It's like, we don't have fifty people in DPW, we have twenty, and they do everything in the city, includes saving us money by building stuff that other cities would probably farm out at considerably more expense. That kinda stuff, right? Right? I mean, that's the reality, is that we do everything, literally everything. I mean, even this reevaluation, right? We did it because we couldn't overburden a department that's, doesn't have the burden, the wherewithal to be overburdened. Could've done it. Would've killed her, she probably would've left, Dunwoody Creek or something, but, or maybe Cedarburg, I don't know. But the point is that there isn't this silver bullet, and I keep, I've been saying this forever, and I, I know everybody wants to go, and I wanna go. But there isn't a silver bullet, and it's gonna cost more, and the taxes are being shifted to the residences, period. That's what's happening, because all the other stuff is, whatever, whoever, whatever we think, there's a reality that it's really happening. So that's, that's that, right? Tim, you can, you can create a memo, but.
Motion to adjourn.
By Alder Person Bailey, is there a second? Second by Alder Person Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at nine seventeen. Just wait until I stop recording. Before you talk, please copy green lights.